Four o'clock, I'll go ahead and call the August 8, 2011 City Commission Meeting to Order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Householder. Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
You'll please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Is there anyone that wants to come to the podium and speak on anything not on today's agenda? Come on up, give us your name and address.
James Loew, 14 and a half, West Ellen. By the way, before I get started, the insignias that I'm wearing of Access TV, I am a former member of Access Television. I wear them in protest as to what Access used to be all about here in Salina. Oh, and also, I'm sure my comments will not air and the audio will not or be edited out of the final product because they've done that on a few occasions and not real liked over there. But I was in your study session last week, and I'm not real sure why you guys are thinking about refunding, re-upping Access as funding. They're so far behind in technology. Their production truck has been broke for about six months. And in a year, they've managed to set up a Ustream account, which if anybody is familiar with that, it takes 15 minutes. They're not really doing a lot of live streaming video on the Internet or Skype calls or anything. I can go right off my cellphone, anywhere in the world, as long as I've got a Wi-Fi connection, and they're not real up on that. So I'm not real sure why we need an access center. You guys already own the equipment, so I think you ought to just hire a part-timer and run the meetings if that's what's important to you. I also sent you guys a letter last week about some of the things of Access. I'm not sure if you guys got those or not.
We do.
Their policy decisions of no live programming, which is currently hindering a lot of people from taking advantage of them over there. And that's why I'm gone. That's why Marsha Stevenson and her friends over there continue to screw with me and my outside businesses over the last three years. Nothing but audio issues, by the way, from Access. And they get $1 million a year from you guys. I'd say like 3 million over the last couple of years. It's just inexcusable that these guys haven't traced down the problem and fixed it. My final comments here, unreasonable in tough economic times when everybody is taking cuts. And Chamber of Commerce on down the line, why would you reward Access TV with a very generous contract and make everybody else take budget cuts on personal and professional business? Thank you for letting me speak, and have a good evening.
Sure, thank you. I do want to clarify, I think what we've been discussing is taking them from 50% of the franchise fee down to 40% for the next budget year. So just to clarify, they are potentially taking a budget cut, just as all the other agencies are that we've been discussing.
Yes, and Mayor, one other thing to add is they don't, the money that you provide is not anywhere near a million dollars a year.
Oh, that's, that's right.
FYI.
Anyone else? Come on up and give us your name and address.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ross Long. I live at 1015 South Santa Fe, and thank you for letting me speak today. I too was once a member of Access and have been permanently expurgated from the organization. But rather than give my story, I would just like to give you a little more information from the study session last week. Access has the practice of, from the public meetings, seemingly they are editing out public comments. I cite the December 22 meeting with the, I believe it was the Board of Zonia Appeals, where a public comment was edited from the meetings. I just see that as a public trust issue, and hopefully you'll look at that when you decide to refund them. I'd also like you to look at the fact that the only station that's really close in size to our access center would be in Enid, Oklahoma, a city about the size of Salina with about twice the city budget, and yet historically they've given about half of what this city gives to our access center. And they have to fight for their money every year. In 2012, they will receive $185,000 from the city of Enid. I would suggest that that would be a good level baseline for you to consider for our access center. Another couple of things which have happened, there's, it's hard to, there's no way to get a members list at the access center, nor even a producers list, which has always been public knowledge before, but not, they cite privacy concerns for some reason. Seems they've had a bylaws change without notifying the members. And they have whistleblower policy, it looks like, on their paperwork, yet myself and others have been denied access to their board meetings. So there's some problems over there, and I would suggest that you lessen your amount by $100,000, what you were planning to give them, and give that to the Chamber Commerce, which I feel has done a lot more for the city of Salina. I would hope there's some little better scrutiny when you're deciding a contract for Access. Perhaps you could allow another not-for-profit or perhaps an educational institution to take over the, to take over Access if they would make a proposal. There was no professional review or needs assessment like there has been every five years for Access. Instead, this year, the staff did that. I would hope you insist from them that they're, that they present a professional review to you before you decide to write them a new contract. And with that, I thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other comments?
My name is Ernie Vincent. I live at Key Avenue, Salina, South Side. I have a comment in regards to the Bicentennial Center. Now, we've had this problem for years, and all we do is keep pushing it off. Now, as far as I'm concerned, the recommendation I saw, sell it. And I mean the whole works. I don't think the city ought to be involved because what's going to happen, we're going to be right back into the maintenance business. The maintenance is what got us into trouble. We failed to see what was happening at that time, and we pushed it off and pushed it off. Now we're spending millions of dollars in the Bicentennial Center. Let's get rid of it. By the same token, you're talking about funds. I would like to see the same thing done to the golf courses. I am sick and tired of cut reading my paper or coming to the meetings and hear how much money we're socking into these places. If they want to run a golf course and they want to play on it, pay for it. I cannot see using our funds. Now, as far as the chamber goes, I think we're spending too much money on them. They come out with one or two articles in the paper and everything else telling you about how they helped one man or two men. I would like to see them publish how many businesses we have rejected. And number one reason on rejecting people in this, in big corporations, was because they were unionized. That is a big factor in getting businesses here. Why the chamber has to turn these people down, I'll never know. Now, my last comment, I think it's my last one, is on the Sheriff Department. Not too long ago, we spent a lot of money to fix this place up.
Sir, were you going to talk about the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department?
Sheriff.
Okay, you realize that's county, and we have no control over that.
Okay. Well then, what, do we want to build a county jail?
That's the county's issue.
Okay, sorry, I'll bring that up for the county.
That's okay. You may get to vote on that, though.
Huh?
We'll see. Said you may get to vote on that, we'll see. How they, what they come up with.
Well, I, I don't see why we got problems over there we don't solve first. On the budget, I would like to see the people here spend our money a lot better. I think there are so many corners that you can cut, and we're wasting money. We're wasting my money and the taxpayers' money. There's a lot of this stuff going out to pay for funds that are not necessary. And I think if you listen to the people, you will find that the majority of the people are against a lot of this funding we're passing out. I'd like to see it stopped. Let's put our money to work instead of giving it away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment today? Last chance. Okay, we'll move on. We do not have awards and proclamations today, so we are to the public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2012 Budget, Sub-Item 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 11, 10,612.
We'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Mr. Franz.
Mayor and Commissioners, the procedure this year is going to be a little bit different than we've normally done in the past. State statute does require a public hearing be held with 10 days clear of published notice prior to the hearing. We had originally scheduled the hearing for today, and a notice of hearing was duly published, and then subsequent to that, it meant the, we received a request to provide some additional flexibility during the budget discussions. So we have republished a notice, and the official hearing is now scheduled for August 22. Nonetheless, the suggest, our suggestion is that we go ahead and start the hearing today, and then at the close of the hearing, simply continue it to August 22. That way, we have an opportunity on both days for comments, and we'll make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak and that we're covered and we've provided that opportunity. City of Salina adopts our budget by ordinance. That requires two readings. First reading is today, and the second then would be scheduled for August 22, along with the, with the public hearing, the other adoption measures. Our budget this year includes total expenditures, excluding interfund transactions and reserves, totaling $72,407,445 for 2012. Comparable amount last year was $72,462,496. So it is just slightly less this year overall than it was last year. Budget challenges, clearly economic recession is a, is a big challenge. Sales and property taxes provide about 35% of our total city revenues and about 66% of the general operations revenues. It appears as though sales taxes are resuming a modest growth pattern. Hopefully, that'll continue into 2012. However, property values continue to slide slightly. We've faced a number of other challenges related to either the recession, sometimes the state requirements and so on. Strategies that we have been engaging in for the past probably four years total, review and reduction of all budget line items. We have limited any general adjustments or cost-of-living adjustments for employees for several years in a row. The 2012 budget as published does contemplate re-establishment of a limited merit system allowance for employees. That system has been suspended for the past two years. Staffing's been reduced significantly from 511 positions to 479 positions. We're continuing the practice of adjusting fees and charges to make sure that individuals who use specific services pay a reasonable amount for those services. The budget does contemplate a property tax rate change from 26.022 mills to 26.665 mills, and we continue to rely on tax stabilization transfers from the special sales tax fund. Today's City Commission should open the public hearing, which you've already done, take comments regarding the proposed budget, and then continue that hearing until August 22, at which time that would be finalized. Total taxes levied will change from $10,415,491 to $10,574,19. The budget as proposed or as contemplated is still under discussion with several issues unresolved. We anticipate resolution of those issues over the next several weeks, and should be able to finalize the budget proposals prior to August 22. Think I will discontinue my remarks at that point and address any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Franz today? Don't think so.
Okay.
Thanks. We heard from Mr. Vincent, is there any other public comment on the budget? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve on First Reading Ordinance Number 11-10612.
Second.
Yeah.
It's the adopting the 2012 budget, too?
Yeah, I'd made a glance over to see if...
Mr. Vincent, Mr. Yedder, do we need to continue?
Do we need a motion to continue the hearing first before the budget action?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
So I rescind my original motion and make a motion that we, that we extend the public hearing on the budget matter until August 22.
No second? I second again. It's been moved and seconded that we continue the public hearing to August 22, 2011. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
And now, Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number 11-10612 on first reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 11-10612 on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. Move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of August 1, 2011.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 4-0. And on to development business.
Item 7.1, Application PDD 03-1B, Request the Approval of an Amended Final Development Plan for Lot 1, Block 1 of the River Run PDD to Allow It to Be Converted from Town Homes to Single Family Home Development. Sub-Item 7.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 11, 10,613.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we have two items for you this afternoon that both relate to the River Run subdivision, which is located at the south end of Marymount Road. And the area we're focusing on is the area that's shaded in gray there, which is Block 5 in the original subdivision. And that is the only area within that subdivision that was set aside for town home development. And so the original plan for the entire subdivision was to end up with 83 residential lots and one large lot in block located here for town homes. The concept that was set up was to have cluster-type town homes that would be grouped together and a total of 30 units allowed on that property. The way that that is legally set up is that a planned development district is created and a homeowners association set up. So if you're familiar with Florida Soul over on Markley Road or Manchester Manor on South Ohio, those are town home developments where what occurs is that the owners own the individual town home units, and the rest of the property is held in common by an association. And in order to do that, there has to be a recorded drawing based on a survey and a plan for labeling and establishing units, and that's what you see on the screen today. If you could go back to that, Dustin. This is the plan that's in place today for Block 5. And of these 10 town home clusters, there's only one that was actually built, and that's right here. And those are units E1, E2, and E3. And what the developer of River Run has found is that he has found that the market is not been very receptive to the town home concept, and that only one of those is in place. So the, the plan that has been presented is to leave the existing plan for the one unit in place and to go to a new plan that would convert all that block into individual building lots. So the proposal is that you would have one cluster town home remaining, and surrounding that would be 14 individual building lots. Within the subdivision there, there are what are referred to as villa lots, manor lots, estates lots, and in this proposal cottage lots. And as a planned development district, there are customized requirements for each of those types of lots. And what the applicant is proposing is that the lots out on Overlook Drive would be estates lots, which would be comparable to what you have across the street. So Dustin, if you could go back to that plan, these lots here are for the, are referred to as estates lots. It would be larger lots, larger footprints comparable to what's across the street. These are being described as cottage lots, which would be single-family dwellings on smaller footprints. This particular undertaking that the developer has decided on would be easier if we didn't have the one town home in existence. But what we have to do is protect the people who have made that investment, keep all those legal mechanisms in place while setting up a new mechanism for all the other homes. And that's, that's why you see a very lengthy list of conditions and notes. The, the goal on the planned development district is, one, to let the town homeowners know that their original plan and scheme is still protected, and then to let future buyers know exactly what the arrangement is. And that arrangement is that this would be a private street that would be owned and maintained by an association. All of the rest of the streets in the subdivision are public, so this would be the lone private street. So our job as staff is to make sure they set up their bylaws and covenants in an association and take care of a maintenance responsibility. So that will have a name. It will be Longfield Drive. It will be constructed to private, not public, street standards. There'll be a sign at the entrance that'll make it clear that it's a private street. Covenants that allow for trash collection trucks, school buses, and city vehicles clearly able to be able to use that street. And the end result will be a plan that looks like this, recorded in the Register of Deeds Office, so that as transactions are made, when there is a deed done for these units, the deed simply says unit E1 or E2 or E3, and the yard area there will be owned in common, whereas on the rest of the lots, the people will own and maintain their yards. So this was reviewed by the Planning Commission on 21st of September 2010. Since that time, the developer's been working on all the details that we've laid in front of them and have come back and addressed all those. So this is on your agenda, and what you're to consider today is changing the zoning for this to go from 30 town homes at three units per building to one town home unit with the rest, single family. So if you agree with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, your action would be to approve the attached ordinance on first reading, and that would establish the zoning ground rules for this area. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions about the planned development district part of this.
Any questions for Mr. Andrew? Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the Commission for Action.
I move we approve item ordinance number 11-10613 filed by Rex Vinear requesting approval of the amended final development plan for Lot 1, Block 5 of the River Run PDD to allow it to be converted from town home to single-family home development.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 11-10613 on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 7.2, Authorize the Mayor to Sign the Replat of Block 5 of the River Run Addition and Accept the Offered Easement Dedications.
Mr. Andrew, I'm guessing these are somehow connected.
These are linked together. And now that you said how the property can be used, this is the official document that will take what is a single-platted lot and subdivide it into 15 lots. And we just provided you the, the background there. It was a pretty ambitious project at the time, and if you can think back a few years to the time when you have a gravel cloud street running along the Elks Club, that has been removed, replaced with a new Cedar Ridge Drive, a rebuilt Marymount Road, so the entire area has changed in its appearance. And this first phase of River Run had 47 lots, and this one, which was a cluster town home lot. So the, the plan here is to take that single lot and block and subdivide it into 15 lots. You've got four, 14 of them that would be available as home sites in the future. Wanted to emphasize that these three lots right here, which is called out in your information, the street and the water and the sewer end right here, and none of these could be built on today. They're included in the plat, but they're recognized as unbuildable without some... They're included in the plat, but they're recognized as unbuildable without some additional improvements. The water and sewer are already in to serve this area. The challenge was that since they were already in, you had to design around them. And so, the other part of this that is significant, and it will be more of a challenge for the city clerk than anyone else, but this currently has a single special assessment assigned to it. And that assessment for water and sewer will have to get reallocated amongst these individual lots. And so, the only extension of improvements we'd be talking about in the future would be overlook drive from here to here and getting water and sewer to those three lots. The rest of the lots are buildable already with the extension of this street and installation of a fire hydrant here. So again, the Planning Commission looked at this in great detail in September. They outlined a whole series of conditions for the developer to address. They have been addressed. There will not be a sidewalk on this private street, but the sidewalk on overlook will be extended. And again, overlook is a public street. This would be a private street. And so, your action today would be to accept the additional easements that Mr. Vaneer's proposing to dedicate and authorize the mayor to sign that replat. And with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Andrew?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize yourself the ability to sign the replat of block five of the River Run addition and accept the offered easements and dedications.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve authorization, allowing me to sign the replat of block five of the River Run addition and to accept the offered easement dedications. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes four zero. Administration.
Item eight point one, first reading ordinance number eleven, ten thousand six hundred fourteen, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
Mr. Franz.
We go through this process a couple of times a year to try to keep up with the abatement of nuisances on properties. Let me get unhooked here. Essentially, nuisance abatement notices are mailed to property owners. They're then given a chance to abate that nuisance on their own. If they don't do so within the allotted time, then the city does it on their behalf and builds the property owner for the, for the work. With this set of properties, we initially billed out twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty cents. We've collected just a little bit less than thirteen hundred and sixty dollars. The remaining amount to be assessed is nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. There is one, one particular item that is somewhat unusual on this set of properties, and that is the removal of a structure which accounts for about twelve thousand dollars of the cost. I'd be glad to handle any questions.
Any questions for staff?
These are just residential properties, correct? Not, not?
I believe they're largely residential. There might be a few commercial lots or something like in there, but they're largely residential.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve on first reading ordinance number one one dash one zero six one four, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance eleven dash one zero six one four on first reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four zero.
Item eight point two, authorize staff to prepare a request for qualifications and solicit interest from private event management and operate the bicentennial center.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a pretty important item, so I'm going to take the time and give you the information you need, and hopefully we can answer all the questions you might have. As was mentioned, what we're looking at is a qualification-based selection method to solicit interest in private company that might, that might choose to want to operate, fully operate and manage the bicentennial center. And the real question to start off with is, why would we consider that in the first place? Just kind of a brief history. In seventy-six, the voters approved a bond issue to build the facility, and it was about six, six point five million dollars in that time, roughly about eighteen million dollars in today's dollars, although I don't think you could actually build it for that anymore. That was to be obviously in Kenwood Park for recreational purposes and as a convention hall. The mission at the time was to provide a regional event center and hospitality center for events that will stimulate the Salina economy, enhance the quality of life for the community. And that's really important because there's a few things that kind of get lost in the shuffle with that facility. It, it, you didn't see in the mission, the event is to financially make money. And one reason is because those facilities never have and they never will, really. But the purpose of that was, I think Salina was large enough at the time, they said, "We should be able to get large concerts and houses inside, let's have a place that can do it." And quite honestly, we didn't really have a lot of small or medium-sized convention-type space in town, so this really was there to meet that need as well. And then finally, the idea of economic impact. It's, it's, I've seen numbers that range from twelve to eighteen million, so I'm not sure, you know, based on whomever's formula they might use, what that local community impact is, but it's a significant impact that is felt by folks who own and operate restaurants and are employed by restaurants and hotels and other businesses in our community. And I think it's, it's served that purpose pretty well. You know, it has hosted numerous entertainment events, conferences, conventions, sporting events, civic club meetings, workshops, just a, just a significant number and type of event, and has, has obviously provided a lot of entertainment and economic impact in the community. The, one of the things we've seen, though, in more recent time is the role has really changed. It's, you know, it's not so much Mid-America or Salina's meeting place anymore because we have a lot of local venues that can take care of the small stuff. And for that type of facility, it financially doesn't make sense for us anymore. We also have seen many Kansas communities develop facilities that directly compete. There's a new facility that'll be open if it's not quite yet in Manhattan. Hayes is talking about a facility, and there, there are other facilities around the state that we compete against already. Customer expectations have changed, too. Quite honestly, and specifically for conferences and conventions, they expect to meet, eat, and sleep under one roof. And you had a little conversation some time ago about a hotel. Whether or not there'd ever be a hotel connect is not really the issue as much as the thought that not having one does make it a little bit more difficult to compete in the convention conference market, so. In two thousand and nine, you adopted a resolution that adopted a business plan to make the facility more competitive and really change the mission and direction to make it more regionally competitive. The intent of that was really kind of easy. It was to increase revenue and decrease the amount of tax subsidy to the center through the types of events and the margin on those events. And really, we said we need more of certain types of events based on some analysis. This is kind of an eye, sort of an eye-opening graph of the general fund subsidy that goes into the bicentennial center fund. And you see a jump in two thousand and seven, and then it declines. I think we kind of rode off that two thousand and seven transfer for a little while, and it wore off. But you can see that it has ranged from about three hundred and fifty-five thousand, or that's what's shown on there, but really, the real number in there is two eighty-nine up towards of about seven hundred thousand just in direct subsidy from the general fund. And that, that's a pretty high number. This is a transient guest tax, and that hasn't changed as far as rate. That actually is a good reflection of how the two percent of the transient guest tax has grown over the years and then fell off in two thousand and eight. So that has just followed that the bicentennial center gets two percent of that transient guest tax, and for every one percent, that's about, pretty close to two hundred thousand dollars. And you can see it did drop off a little bit in the last couple of years off that pace. But you, you put them all together, and you're, you're roughly somewhere around a million dollars. And that's the important thing, is you had two sources of tax-generated revenues, and you're upwards of about a million dollars. And what we said is, is what's, what's an operational coverage ratio or percentage? This is in a form of a ratio, but you could call it a percentage as well. And it's varied from about the low of, let's see, point four oh is, is today, and that's the lowest that it's been, as high as point six two. And what that really means is, is that the amount of revenue generated by the facility, which does not include any tax dollars, what's the ratio of the money generated by the facility to the expenses, the operational expenses? This doesn't count major capital, just operational expenses of the facility. So that means for every dollar spent, that the revenues are only coming up with forty percent of every dollar spent. The rest has to come from tax revenues. So let's keep that in mind. We don't believe that, that number is where it needs to be. One of the models that's not been used in the history of the center has been the utilization of a private event facility management company. We've always, the city's always managed and operated the facility. In the last few weeks, staff has spoken with various companies, spent some time with a couple of them. We think there are three that are primarily interested and that really serve the niche. There could be a fourth or fifth one that pops up, but three that we were initially made aware of, and those are SMG, Global Spectrum, and Venue Works. And we think with increasing competition, tough economic times, that we've seen their presence in other facilities become more prominent across the country, and it's because they're, they have an expertise in the area and that industry that we really don't have. Here's some examples. This is the Expo Center, in Kansas Expo Center in Topeka, and that's managed by SMG. The Intrust Bank Arena, the New Arena in Wichita by SMG. The United Wireless Center, the Dodge City Facility that just opened up, and that's managed by Venue Works. Venue Works also manages the Topeka Performing Arts Center. And then the Overland Park Convention Center is managed by Global Spectrum. So we have a presence of all three of those companies in the state right now. Some of the benefits of private management, and there could be more, but these are some of the main ones we looked at, but the, the access to industry knowledge is so important. How does the industry work? What are the strategies that are out there? What are the best options and angles? When we're looking at pricing and booking events and self-promotion, concessions, food and beverage, maintenance, industry standards for whatever it might be. They do offer bulk purchasing because obviously those companies have multiple venues, so they can purchase in bulk, and that could save you a percentage right off the top of, say, food and beverage costs and maybe some other things. They do have experience and competitive, bottom-line, business-oriented environment, so that's something that they, they deal with. That's really not ever been the niche, and typically isn't of local government. So that's, that's an approach and an angle that we, we haven't really had. They can route shows among their various venues that they have, and then they can network the facilities together for programming. That's sort of part of that routing as well. But occasionally, they might be able to share certain costs as well and resources that they have. They have relationships with booking agents and promoters because they do it all the time. With us, we'd be relying on, in essence, a single person to develop those relationships. It's not to say it can't be done, but we found it to be difficult. They have an internal network of knowledge and experience. They're not limited to just the director or a marketing person. They have the whole company they can talk to if they need to. They have more independence and negotiations with the various folks that bring events to the community, greater staffing resources, we believe, more efficient purchasing process, and just overall experience and knowledge of the functions that most public entities simply don't have. We can operate a facility, but the margins, it's really getting to the strategic margins. I'm not sure we have the ability to get to those for you. Some of the characteristics, if you said, "Well, Jason, what would it look like if we had a private management operation model?" Well, the city would typically retain the facility in site ownership, so we would maintain ownership. Now, you could always choose to sell the facility, as was asked of you earlier. You could do that. You certainly would hope to think that there'd be a market for that. I don't know if there would be. But in this case, to own the facility and the site, the city would have right of review and sometimes approval for things like a business plan, operating budget, event budget, event plan, and capital improvement plan. The full management operation and general maintenance of the facility would be by the private management company, so they would take on the full operational role of that. The city would, in essence, the city would fund operational costs. It's a gap. It's really based on how the private company performs. There's still anticipated to be a gap, but it's anticipated to be a lot less, and the city would end up funding that. And also, a capital improvement plan, it's typical, because again, this is a management company, they don't own the facility. So we'd expect that they would work with us to try to prioritize those most needed capital improvements, and that would have to be part of the whole process. The city would typically review events and related fee structure, including the sharing of event-related costs and risks. So there's still risk. You don't get rid of the risk overall. What you hope is, is you hope you have someone in the seat that can minimize the risk and do a better job of making margins on those activities. You have a, typically, the compensation model for the company would be one, it would include a flat fee and certain incentive fees based on performance, and it all has to be within the IRS guidelines, and they're all kind of used to that because we have a publicly-owned facility with tax-exempt bonds. And so, I, I don't, I think that's a fairly easy structure to get to, but generally speaking, that's what you, what you see. And typically, you would see that they would honor the prior booked event obligations. So the question is, is well, okay, if we ask you to start the process, does that mean we quit booking? We say, "No, we don't." And they recognize that, and they want that business there when they, if they come into play, and they recognize that that business would be under the terms that it was booked under. When we think about a process timeline, and this is, this is a bit of a guesstimate. Obviously, the first step is to, for you to say, "Staff, it's okay to solicit requests for qualifications." It's a little bit different than proposals. Proposals, we'd have a document probably an inch and a half thick. Qualifications, our, our request is actually a little more detailed for a request for qualifications than what you typically see, but we feel the best thing, we need to have the right fit for the city of Salina and the, and the facility. That's the first thing. And then you will look at the dollars at some point, but the first thing is the right fit, and it's determining who's the most qualified. And what that means then is that we would have a due date for the submittals, and we're looking at September ninth. And we would anticipate, obviously reviewing the submittals, site visits and interviews. We'd want to see the facilities, but with, and more than that, we'd want to talk to people, the organizations who own the facilities, who are then under the contract with the private management company, to see if their expectations were realized. To me, that's the best information we can really get. That talks about credibility and performance. We would then come back and we would ask you to authorize staff to negotiate with the specific company, and at that point, we would negotiate the dollars, negotiate the contract terms. And that's where it's difficult. If we just did an RFP, you're not really in a position to negotiate among the three. You just take them as is, and we feel we're in better shape to try to negotiate that, knowing that you may have two or three companies that could actually do the job. You negotiate with the first one, the other two are sitting back, knowing that if we don't agree with the first one, they can possibly come in and will negotiate with one of them if a negotiation, initial negotiations fail. So that means whoever's in essence selected first for us to begin negotiations with really need to come to consensus with us, because it's not just them. It could be someone else still. And then hopefully, by kind of guesstimating early November, once negotiations are complete, we'd ask for commission authorization to approve a contract, and based on all that timeline, early December, it could be the beginning of the year or two, the management of the, in the operations from a new private company would commence. And so that's basically what we have for the timeline in there. From a fiscal impact perspective, there's really no impact initially, and there's really no obligation from the city commission to have the process. Once the process starts at any time, if you say, "Aye, we're not interested," that's okay. You know, they've given their stuff, but we're not obligated, and the city isn't, and we can stop at any time. I think what you'll find is, you're probably going to find a company or companies that you feel can do it, and then it's a matter of negotiating a contract to, to meet the needs. But again, at any time, you could just pull out. You're no, no way obligated. So there isn't an initial fiscal impact. Our hope is, though, is that we believe, when we talked about that operational margin, rather than point four, point five, we think that should at least be point seven to point eight, somewhere in there, maybe even a little higher, but, you know, realistically, right in there. And, and when we talk about putting a million dollars into the facility, my hope is, is that we can bring that down at least half. And I think that's very possible and very doable. And certainly, still, there's some subsidy to the facility, but I think what you're, at that point, you're looking at something that's more reasonable within the industry, in the mainstream, and it's a little better to convert that back into the total community benefit as well, because to get to that, there, there should be more events, different types of events, better margins on events and so forth. So we think that the positives will come back both to the community and also to the bottom line. Conformance with the strategic plan, really goal three is, is the objective here. The city will provide the highest quality of services, consistent with governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality, and that's really what we're after with something like this. So what we've given you are a couple alternatives, really, there's not a whole lot at this point in time, but one would be to authorize staff to prepare requests for qualifications and solicit interest from private event management companies to manage and operate the bicentennial center. And then the second one would obviously be, not to authorize us to do that at this time. Certainly, there may be other ideas or thoughts that you might have. And I will say, too, in kind of laying all this out, we've already done a lot of homework, so if you do authorize us to move forward with the solicitation, we're going to be able to get that started very, very quickly. we're going to be able to get that started very, very quickly. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And also, we have Jacob Wood, our interim bicentennial center manager, who might be able to fill in a detail or two I'm not aware of.
Any questions? Did he really cover it all? No questions? It's a good presentation. Is there any public comment?
Yeah, I do have a comment. In your slide, you showed where the company takes over. They're responsible for maintenance. Yet, a few slides later, you come in and say, "With the city is going to be in charge of the maintenance." That has been my question since I started here, was the biggest part of the funding is going to be maintenance on that building. Why are we getting involved with that if we're going to rent it out? Let them handle it.
The, well, what it all comes down to are the margins on the building. If a management company came in and they could make money on the facility beyond operations, then they could set aside money for capital improvements, such as replacement of roofs, HVAC, sound systems, work on the outside of the building, those types of things. The model doesn't work where they'll have that kind of, we don't expect that they'll have that level of resources, of profit in essence, to put into capital. So, typically, what we've seen with all these other facilities is the capital, the large-cost type replacements, would still have to come from the city, but that the private company would take care of the daily maintenance. You walk in, you see floors clean, walls clean, replacement of minor equipment, minor repairs, things like that. That would all be under their direct obligation.
But if I'm misunderstanding something, correct me. But in your comments, you said you don't think they will make enough money, that you think they'll make fifty percent. And with luck, we may get a little more out of the building.
Yeah. Today, the tax dollars that go into the facility are anywhere from about nine hundred thousand to a million dollars. I think that if they do a good job, a reasonably good job, that that should be cut in half. But I don't think it can go away because we haven't seen that in this particular industry. We just haven't seen that in facilities, regardless of whether it's public or private management. They could maybe even exceed cutting it in half and cut it even more, trying to find what I think would be the average expectation in there. I don't want to oversell it and say, "Well, you're going to eliminate that altogether." Maybe that happens. I don't expect that. I wouldn't want to tell you that. And then, later, say, "Well, you know, we just, we're wrong." I don't want to oversell that to you.
I think we'll know a lot more if and when we get the proposals from the company.
And that's right, because the key in that is, is with, if you get far enough where you desire to contract with the company, you will have the business plan, you will have the budget, you will have all those assumptions in place before you would vote on the contract, and all that would be in there as part of the package. So, you'll have the ability to see what they believe the end result will be at the end of the year that we contract with them, or two years or three years, or whatever that might be. And then, you can make a decision.
Have we decided on who's going to be the overall chief of this thing? I hope he's going to be a good one.
Yeah, no, I mean, at this stage, the question is, do we go out and solicit interest? And once we get that interest from whether it be the three companies that have a presence in Kansas or any others, it's a matter of trying to find the right one. And that's the key, is to find the right one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Perney.
Yeah, I almost left, and then I, I like to leap way far ahead. And fortunately, Jason leapt ahead a little bit and said that the goal would be to try to get closer to seventy-five percent self-sufficiency out of the Bi-Center. So, the-
Will you give us your name and address? Sorry.
I'm Mr. Perney of one-on-one Overhill, Salina, Kansas. And I've kind of followed the Topeka situation. I've always been intrigued that Topeka built the Expo Center shortly after the Bi-Center, and it was initially virtually identical. It's almost the same seating capacity. It's a same-size arena. It does have a couple of subsidiary buildings that, in effect, are equivalent to our Heritage Hall. Then, they came up with a hotel a few years later. So, that throws the whole thing off. That's why we talked about trying to, that's not why, but that's one of the reasons we talked about getting a hotel with the bicentennial center. Anyway, to get to the end of the thing, I didn't realize that Topeka was under private management until I read the packet last Thursday. So, my question, I guess to Jason, is what is the coverage ratio at Topeka? Do we know that? Does it work in Topeka, which is the most similar facility in the state that I can think of?
Yeah, no, we haven't looked at that yet, but some of the information that we're requesting in the qualifications process, which that's why I said we're going to be a little more detailed than some of the others, we're having them try to choose what they and we believe are the comparable facilities and give us some of that detailed information so we can really nail that down and figure out how successful they really are. Because you hear it, you hear a lot, but in the end, we want to see real facilities, real numbers, real coverage ratios and get an idea. And facility-wise, right, it's a pretty good comparable. The hotel and the size of their convention center now kind of changes them because they can handle a much larger convention than we can. But still, it's not a bad comparable in Kansas to look at.
The other great irony comparison is that it was a fairgrounds, and they pretty well eliminated the fair entirely and combined the operations. But-
As an aside.
So, the other thing that's jumping way ahead, which I guess would come in when you were reviewing proposals, is the whole prospect of that two percent of the split of the transit guest tax. Since it's going to end up being subsidized anyway, I think we need to bear in mind that we may need to change that ratio of where the transit, where the guest tax goes, where the bed tax goes. That's why they call it bed tax. Two syllables is so much easier. Okay. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we should go ahead today.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Okay, I authorize the staff to prepare requests for qualifications and solicit interest from private event management companies to manage and operate the bicentennial center.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the commission authorized staff to prepare a request for qualifications and solicit interest from private event management and operate the bicentennial center. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four, zero. Other business?
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss legal counsel matters subject to attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in those matters, and reconvene at five fifteen P.M.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four, zero. Do you anticipate any business?
No, we do not.
Or any action? Thank you.
Preludium by Edvardi Arnafal. Eric Kunsela, the Cincinnati Pops Orchestra. Radio Kansas is funded by Hubris Communications, Internet That Works, now providing internet service to communities across Kansas, including Larned, Pratt and Kingman. On the web at hubris.net, eight-six-six-two-six-seven-four-six-